United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including the meeting agendas, the September financial fund balance statement, minutes of the September 19 regular meeting, payments of monthly bills excluding payments to Dan Johnson and Jeff Ellison, and the updated substitute teacher listing. Do I have a motion? Randy makes a motion. Michael seconds. All those in favor carries a four oh. Next, I need a motion to approve payment to Dan Johnson. Michael makes a motion. Randy seconds.
Yeah. I can't do Jeff or Dan this month. We're gonna have to wait.
We'll do that next month.
We don't have four.
They can't be.
Nope. It has to be four. On contract this year. Has to be four. Sorry. Sorry, guys.
Don't bother.
Paying for his officiating time. He'll probably be alright.
Yeah. Alright, we'll move on and do the MSBA monthly board report.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Board Association's board report for the month of October. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the recent 2019 MSBA Annual Conference where nearly 1,200 school board members and administrators gathered to learn the latest on issues having an impact on their local school districts and to improve their leadership skills. Attendees had the opportunity to participate in more than 120 breakout sessions and workshops, presented mostly by leaders from school districts throughout the state. Among the keynote speakers at the event was bestselling author, social entrepreneur, and decorated combat veteran Wes Moore, who thanked school board members for choosing to serve children.
And I am grateful for the fact that there are people who are willing to line up with my wife and I and say, "We will fight for your children as if they were ours."
That means something to me.
Pause of that. Pause that.
If you're willing to stand in the gap even when you don't have to.
Look. Mark. Alright, just a second. We're gonna pay those two bills. Mr. Henry, can you announce who you are, please?
Yes, this is Mark Henry.
Okay. Alright. Thanks, Mark. Thanks for calling in. So, we need to approve two bills. And I'll let Mark do that.
I need a motion to approve payments to Dan Johnson.
I'll make a motion.
Michael makes a motion. I have a second. Randy seconds. All in favor? Be, you wanna do roll call? Mark, what's your vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Carries four oh with one abstention, Mr. Johnson. Next, I need a motion to approve payments to Jeff Ellison. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Randy makes a motion. I have a second.
I'll second.
Michael seconds. All those in favor? Mark?
I vote yes.
That would be four oh with the, all of them be abstaining. Alright, that's it.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you calling in.
You're welcome.
Alright. Let's leave a way to do.
That you're willing to understand the realization that you, every day, are fighting for kids, many whom you will never even meet them. Many whom you'll never even know their names. But you fight every day for the hope of them. You fight every day for their pathways, as if they were your own. And that's meaningful.
Standing in the gap, by the way, has been the theme this year for MSBA's president, Rhonda Gilstrap of the Blue Springs Board of Education. Among his many accomplishments, Wes Moore is the chief executive officer of the Common Good Foundation, one of the nation's largest foundations aimed at alleviating poverty.
We have a very clear focus with our organization that we will fight for and we will serve for children and families who are coming up in poverty and create real pathways for sustainable economic mobility. And the thing that I'm very clear about is quantitatively and historically, there's never been anything that's been able to show a long-term sustainable economic mobility for a family like increases in educational assets. Nothing.
Moore told school board members and administrators attending the conference, "Their advocacy for children is real and meaningful." Also speaking at this year's annual conference was Governor Mike Parson, who challenged board members and administrators to work with him to figure out ways to do a better job of paying teachers adequately.
But we have to do something with the funding situation for the teachers in this state. There is no way the direction Missouri's headed right now with the economic development engine that we have in this state, with the workforce development pieces we got. We cannot keep into a spec to perform when we're paying our teachers, 48th in the nation in this state, when we're starting to move up the ladder of things. If we don't do a better job in that, there will be consequences to that. And that's just a fact.
Parson added, "Every community in Missouri should have the ability to offer voluntary early childhood education programs." Missouri's 2020 Teacher of the Year is Melissa Grandal, an English language arts teacher at Fortland High School near Springfield. She told an audience at the annual conference, "Missouri has outstanding teachers, but many feel overwhelmed and frustrated that they are not doing enough for their students who struggle to break the cycle of poverty."
I ask you to support your teachers, and I know that you do, but I'm asking you to support their teachers, to talk to them, to encourage them, to find them and listen to them, find out what they need and what they believe. Teachers are schools' best resource, but so often, they feel isolated and underappreciated. And I ask you to make them part of the conversation, and I'm certain that you'll be glad that you did.
Grandal will serve as Missouri's representative in the National Teacher of the Year Program. The MSBA Delegate Assembly met during the annual conference to vote on the position statements that will form the basis of MSBA's advocacy work in the coming year. Among the new position statements approved by delegates are statements calling for funding to allow local school districts to identify and address safety and security concerns and for increased accountability for charter schools. Every school board belonging to MSBA is eligible to send at least one voting delegate to MSBA's Delegate Assembly. One of the highlights of this year's annual conference was the student showcase, where students from 22 school districts were on hand to demonstrate skills gained through innovative programs offered in their districts. School board members and administrators had the opportunity to meet with the students and have them explain the unique programs offered by their school districts. The MSBA Annual Conference, in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators, is on the move. MSBA President Rhonda Gilstrap announced at this year's event the decision by the MSBA Board of Directors to move the 2020 Annual Conference from the Lake of the Ozarks to Kansas City. The 2020 Annual Conference will be held from September 24th to 27th. You'll be receiving more information about the new location of the annual conference in the coming weeks. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from...
Anybody have any workshops I went to that they thought were especially good, something we need to look into? We all attended several.
I thought they were, all that I attended were very informational. Very.
The best part that I went to was the last one they had at the end of the day on Saturday. To be honest, I was gonna cut out a little early as soon as I got my card scanned, but five minutes into it, it was about diversity in the schools and basically finding future teachers.
Yeah.
We have such a problem with it. And I was just super impressed. This one lady was from a Kansas City area, I think. She said she was, had quite an attitude when she was a kid and she was in ISS a lot. First one in her family graduating from high school. I forget what she said she went to school for, but she ended up getting 60 hours. She could be a substitute teacher and she wasn't really happy doing what she was doing. And she didn't wanna teach, but she wanted that hundred dollars a day. So, she did it for a while. She found out she liked it. She was a little fireball. She could handle those kids in tough situations. And one of the other teachers at school said, "You should go back to school and get your degree. You know, you're just a natural to become a teacher." And the thing about it says, she said, "I didn't know I could do this. No one noticed me when I was in school." And that's what I'd like to encourage everyone in our school system to do is, all these kids that come through our system, a lot of them maybe don't get noticed. They're, you know, they're not on the sports team, maybe they're not real active in the clubs or something, but we'll just need to try to notice everybody. That was the best one for me.
Thank you. Okay, so, a couple of spotlights. Our first one is gonna be Mr. Hamby. Mr. Hamby, can you come up?
Sure.
So, Zach Hamby has been, teaches English for us at the high school.
He may stand here.
Yeah. He's a dad was superintendent for a long time, Blue Springs. Zach has done a great job. Probably his best asset is he brought his wife with him.
Yeah.
And his two kids. But she now teaches for us, Rachel, a few guys at the stand-up. Rachel taught at Mount Grove, and we talked to her at a basketball game one night. We had an opening and kinda convinced her to come, but it's a great, it's been a great asset. They're a great team to our English department. But Zach was honored, be recognized as the Regional Teacher of the Year, then made the semifinalist for the State Teacher of the Year, then made the finals for the State Teacher of the Year. So, he's gonna be honored on Monday night at the State Teacher of the Year banquet. Great representative. I talked to several people that were on the committee that raved about him, that I didn't know, a lot of those people, that they've found me at a meeting, one meeting or the other, but said, "Hey, you're from Ava. I wanna talk to you about the teacher that interviewed." So, made us very proud. They have talked about, he has a unique teaching style. Can you just briefly talk about that to the board?
Well, when you're trying to get students interested in something, the more you can give them a role in what they're doing, the better. And something that we do in our classes, we know it's an English class, there's lots of readings, so we try to turn the stories into scripts, so you can have each kid have a certain part, they can participate in the story, and you can take something that's classic and, you know, kinda old, but because you give them a part in it, it makes it interesting, they're able to learn the language and kinda, since they can interact with it, you know, learn it on a deeper level. So, that's something that we try to do in our class that's been really effective.
And how many books have you written?
Oh, probably like seven or so, yeah.
So, almost often. So, and it provides a lot of, has a website that he provides a lot of information for other teachers to use as well. So, becoming more well-known, I think, every day, so.
Well, I'm honored that I was, you know, nominated for it, and it was, it was a learning experience, for sure, yeah.
So, we are blessed to have he and his family in our district, so. Anyway, I just want to congratulate you.
Thank you.
It's exciting to see you on Monday night as well.
Okay, alright. Okay, alright, alright. Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it, appreciate it. Alright, thanks, appreciate it.
Mr. Belton, you have the next group.
You've heard me mention at different meetings over the last year, Community Task Force. Started, I think, official title is OBOE Task Force, Substance Abuse, any of those issues that are facing our community. We've got a couple ladies here tonight that we're gonna recognize as part of that task force. These, these are the driving forces behind this task force. I've got Ms. Valeris, Administrator with Douglas County Health Department, and Ms. Rebecca Gann, Rural Health Network Director at the MAC. I am not going to begin to try to list all the things that you've seen in our community, but I know the thing, Dr. Dial and I have tried at every meetings, every month for the last year-plus at this point, ladies, at least one of us tries to be in attendance. To me, the number of organizations from our community that have come together to focus on this, law enforcement, healthcare, the different departments, you know, when we're talking about prevention and treatment, it's all the different factors. I am gonna mention some of the things that have taken place here at school. One of the things that came out of these meetings was the conversations about how young our students are being exposed to some of these things. I know one of our after-school batteries did with younger kids, just decision-making type things and coping skills. I know Ms. Becky has presented numerous times in some of her health classes, offered sessions with parents at our parent-teacher conferences, gonna do that again here next week. But I just wanna recognize those ladies, the work that they have done. You ladies have anything that I've left out you wanna mention? It's just really ongoing work. We're gonna talk more about some vaping changes you're gonna see in the district here later on in the meeting, but I do wanna recognize you two ladies. Did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
No, thank you very much. It's an honor to want to sit there.
So, one thing that, so, they have helped us, or our nurses and our school resource officers are going through Narcan training here this month, I think, pretty quickly. So, we're gonna be able to have Narcan in our nurse's office as well as Officer Reed will have it with him. So, if we do happen to have, unfortunately, whether it be an adult or a student, some type of an overdose, we won't have to wait on an ambulance to get here, we'll have that right on-site. So, and that was just through a meeting that I was sitting in with you all, we were talking about, one of the prevention meetings, and that got mentioned, and that's kinda how we got connected with that, so.
Just tons of resources within our community that we've identified.
Yeah.
Ton of work that these ladies have put in. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, ladies.
Alright, we'll go in, start our principal and director reports, and we'll start with elementary principal, Dr. Dahl.
This week, third grade's been celebrating Missouri Day, different activities throughout the week. Today, we actually had the Mariots in at the Formar Center. They went over the history of the fiddle and performed for our students, so we'd like to thank their family for coming in and doing that. They do it every year. We appreciate that.
Thank you. High school principal, Dr. Nash.
Again, I'd like to congratulate the FFA Grasslands team for making it to state, and also the ladies softball team who advanced in districts tonight.
Thank you. Special Services Director, Mrs. Swapp.
Hi. We had two teachers recently attend some training, they're gonna come back and share to our team, Lacy Roberts in the high school attended a transition meeting, so she can help our teachers better plan for what these, what our children want to do after high school graduations and resources. And Becky, like you, attended an IEP meeting on how to write effective goals for our students to get them better prepared for high school.
Alright, thank you. We'll go next to our executive administration reports. Dr. Dahl.
Okay, just a couple of different things that I'm working on. I'm currently pursuing a grant through the Missouri Department of Natural Resources for partial funding of a new handicap bus. The bus is a 2005, has significant problems on it. So, that is part of the Volkswagen Trust lawsuit that happened several years ago with a mission control. You have to have a bus older than '07, and you have to actually destroy the bus, you have to drill a hole through the block. But it's $20,000 to $40,000 is what that will help pay for that bus. So, anyway, just that bus, it's next on the list to be replaced, so we're writing that grant, it's due by the end of the month, so hopefully that will be good news. We also received, it was in the paper today, we received a STEM grant through the University of Missouri-Rawlin. It was actually money that was earmarked by the legislature to expand science, technology, engineering, mathematics in this region, actually. So, Mrs. Swish wrote that grant. We're gonna implement that at the sixth and seventh grade, in the sixth and seventh grade science to train teachers in project-based learning and exploration. And we'll use that money for training and to purchase classroom equipment. So, that is a great thing. Our ransom, just a ransomware update, kinda where we are. All upgrades have been completed. The last thing that we had to do was move our A+ or alternative school software off of a physical server on-site to a cloud-based server, and that was done as of 5:00 today. I got that phone call. So, we are finished with that. That finishes all of our upgrades that we were making anyway, that we had approved last spring anyway, plus it has solved all of our other ransomware issues. So, now we have nobody trying to get into the system. Before, if alternative school kids were at home, they were accessing the server from off-site, that was part of our issue. So, we no longer have to worry about them trying to get in our network. So, anyway, that should be wrapped up and the bow tied on that issue. Financial information, I won't have any of that till next week, but state financing seems to be running in a positive manner, so I don't anticipate any concerns at this time with formula coverage. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dahl.
I am gonna go through our APR, Annual Performance Report from last year's data. This just was released today.
12:00 morning?
12:00 morning. You must either seen me present this before, it looks drastically different than what it's looked previously. It's made up of the same information. We're gonna go through it a little bit. I'll tell you what each of those components are, and just describe what that looks like. APR, always been five components, academic achievement. When we talk about MAP in our EOC assessments, that's the biggest component of that. That's all of our students and their performance level on those assessments. Now, the second thing you will see is subgroup achievement. The state identifies certain areas that are considered subgroups. For us, predominantly, that's gonna be our students with IEPs, and then students on free and reduced lunch year, and talking about in the video, some of the measures of poverty, that's the most common measure that is used. So, those will be our subgroups. Same thing, how did those groups perform on the state assessments? That's what this information will be. Third bar, CCR, you'll see those initials throughout. That's college and career readiness. That's made up of some different components, but that is tracking our graduates. Something else they reference, you know, are they ready and prepared for whatever comes next after high school? Fourth thing, attendance, and the last one's gonna be graduation rate. So, those are the components that make up the district's APR score. First thing we're gonna look at here is our academic achievement. It's broken up into three areas. Well, first thing we look at is status. Status is where our students are currently at. Every student we have that takes a MAP or an EOC assessment, there's a performance level that's assigned to that for both math and ELA. This year, we will have science scores. Supposed to be yesterday. Most latest update says next Wednesday. We'll see. We will not have social studies scores this year, that was a field test, it was first year of the assessment. But when we look at status, that is where our students are currently at on their performance on assessments. Then you'll see two other columns, growth and progress. When we look at that growth measure, that is tracking each individual student from one year to the next. So, if a student scored proficient one year to demonstrate growth, they would have to move to advanced on their performance level the following year. Progress, that's within, that's your students in one area. Example, I think I put up here, myoscerous one students from one year compared to myoscerous one students the next year. So, progress and growth, that's tracking students, their performance as they go for growth and for progress within a specific content area. Alright? So, this next slide is where this is really gonna look different from what it ever has before. In the past, they've assigned a number of percentage points, and that's what we looked at. Now, and I've tried, that's not really easy to read, and I am gonna upload that report for you so that you can access, but. Well, I've circled the middle ones, 'cause that's where I, to me, that's where we need to start. That's where our students are currently at, that's the status. And what you're seeing there, well, that's unfortunate. Sorry about that. Right here, this is our academic achievement, and that is overall. That's every student we have that took a MAP or an EOC assessment. I'm gonna go down here, just because it's easier to see. You see these little triangles? That indicates the state average. Alright? So, when you look up here, ELA and math, there's a little blue line that represents our students. We are right at the state average as far as our status when it comes to ELA and math. And that's, that's fine. That is not the goal. You know, our goal is we would love for our status to be above what the state average is. But that's where our numbers stand for this year. So, when it comes to ELA and math, for our entire student population, their performance on those assessments, that's where they're at. They're right at what that state average is. You move down inside the red oval I've got there, that's our subgroup achievement. And I'm hoping you can see there, a blue line that represents Ava is to the right of where that state average is. Our students and teachers need to be applauded for their performance in this area. Again, subgroup achievement, and I'm trying to think of a statewide word on this, traditionally underperforming, underrepresented student populations. Our teachers are doing an outstanding job with this, with these students. For us, this is the majority of our students. You know, we're gonna run 70%, roughly, free and reduced. This also includes our students with IEPs. But again, as you look at that, with our ELA and our math, our students are achieving above the state average on the assessments. So, again, that's a positive. So, that's the status. And again, I have tried to circle that just to give us some place to start there. I'm gonna move your attention over to the left, again, back to the top, this is academic achievement, this is overall. What that is, is the individual students. So, that would be tracking a student from one year to the next. Four levels of achievement, advanced, proficient, basic, below basic. Those are the four categories a student is assigned to scoring every year. So, what that is tracking from one year to the next, what percentage of our students moved up the performance level. What you're gonna see there, ELA, that's on track. The state identifies certain percentage of performance levels that is considered on track. And our students in ELA were on track as far as that growth. On the math, it is not on that level. You know, again, that can be described, I guess, the best is stagnant. If every student performed at the same level year after year, you would not show growth. That's just...
But understanding what that would be if, if you were advanced.
If you were, everybody was advanced.
Seventh grade, and you were advanced in eighth grade.
You didn't grow.
You didn't grow. You did well, but you didn't grow.
So, that number, truthfully, that number could be misleading. We're gonna look at some areas later on where we're at 99.6% in the category. It's gonna be very difficult to demonstrate growth from one year to the next. Now, as we look at this and you see where our status is, again, we're at the state average. average. I can assure you, when our teachers look at this information, and they already are, our teachers are already looking at individual scores, they are looking at individual students and thinking about, what can I do to, this will do better than last year. Our teachers are already doing that work. But that's what that represents. Same thing for academic achievement, subgroup achievement. You move over to the far right, that's when I was talking about within a given content area, how to make, how to one student's do last year versus myosceric one students this year. It's not following a student, it's following a particular content area and assessment, and comparing that from year to year. Again, you see, ELA is the top number, math is the bottom one for academic achievement, which again, is all of our students. You move group down to subgroup achievement, that's our students in those, in those free and reduced students with IEPs, how those students are performing. Again, our teachers are seeing their data from their individual areas. This is compiled altogether as one document. Questions on those two areas, academic achievement and subgroup achievement? Okay. You know, I, hopefully, you know, you've heard me talk on those PD days and common plan time, POC time. People, hey, what are teachers do on those Monday PD days? These are the kinds of things that they're working towards, reviewing, and reflecting on, really. Our college and career readiness, and it's made up of three areas. The first one is gonna be made up of assessment scores, ACT scores, ASVAB scores. And this score is made up of the percentage of our students who achieve scores on one of those assessments that are at or above benchmarks identified by the state. The second component is our advanced placement. For us, that's gonna be dual-credit students, dual-enrollment students. And then you have TSA and IRC credentials. Those are the students in vocational areas that are earning some kind of credential because of specific training or skills that they've been recognized for on the assessment. And then the third one, post-secondary placement. And this is, are our students going into some type of post-secondary training or education, or going into the military? Or are they being placed into, when you see CT and A, that's career and technical education? We have students that went through auto mechanics here, then they go into a related field directly into the workforce that they had gone through and gotten some training for as students. So those are the components of, when you see CCR, college and career readiness, that's what that's made up of. Gonna look kinda similar. So the column on the left, that's status. All right? If you see, in each of those areas, we're all the way over to the right in that blue area, you can see the percentage of the number of our students earning a score above or at, at or above that state benchmark, over seventy-four percent of our kids. You go down to advanced placement, a number of our kids earning dual-credit courses or some type of credential, it's over sixty percent of our kids. Then you move down to our post-secondary placement, and this is a number that ninety-six point two percent of our students are either going into some type of post-secondary training, directly into a field that they receive some training for here, or into the military. Real credit goes to, to our high school, Dr. Nash Counseling Department. And truly that work, we start trying to help kids identify just career opportunities, even down probably before middle school, but real credit to the high school, tracking that information and helping those students see what's out there. This is the one where we were talking about, when you're so far over to the right, it gets very difficult to show growth and progress in those. You know, finally, ninety-six point two percent, there's not a lot of room to the right to move. And again, you see all of those, those state criteria that have been established, we're in that top criteria for college and career readiness. So we do, we feel, we feel good about that. Our students, when they graduate, are able to go and do the things that hopefully they wanna do. Questions on that component? The last two I've got pulled up here together, it's attendance and graduation rate. For years, the number was, you needed ninety percent of your kids to have ninety percent attendance or above. You track every single kid in your school district, and if they're above ninety percent attendance, there's a number of points that the state assigns for this benchmark. If they're above eighty-seven and a half, there's partial points, and then above eighty-five percent. Again, you see there, we're in that far-right area on attendance. That's a credit to, honestly, that's a credit to all of our teachers, administrators. We know this, and I think Dan touched on this before. We know if we can get our students involved with something, whether it's a club, it's an activity, a sport. It's just another incentive for them to be at school, sending them something they look forward to and enjoy. I think each of our building levels have teams that are working to identify those kids that are not involved in something already, trying to help them connect somewhere. That's a credit to all those folks, you know, those teachers building relationships at the elementary levels. You know, that's, they're in that one classroom all day, you go to the other buildings as I work with students, so a lot of credit goes to everybody involved in that. Graduation rate, you see multiple numbers there, the state, four-year, five-year, six-year, seven-year. And what you'll see, the stable that you heard, credit on whatever the highest is. Really, to me, this is again, credit to the high school, counseling departments really, staying persistent with those kids. You know, when we do have students that don't graduate in four years, we're continuing to try to work within the math-out-of-plan for them to graduate. You know, you see the statistics on, you know, what happens when those students don't. So we've got different programs and plans in place to try to help those students go ahead and get their diploma, and then be able to go on to whatever kind of training workforce that they wanted to pursue afterwards. Questions on that? I know that looks entirely different. For years, we had a number assigned...
Last year, we were ninety-nine point eight percent...
Correct.
Out of a hundred. We do not have a score this year. They're not giving us a score, they're not favoring the score.
Just a completely different presentation on that. There is the criteria the same...
Yes.
But it just looks different. Questions on any of those parts? All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Having started a discussion and action items, and we'll start with facilities and ground program review.
Last summer, we had four projects. We remodeled a special services building, moved it over, and two, where Debbie Myers' preschool was, we moved Debbie Myers' preschool over there, remodeled it for a new preschool, put in some new playground equipment there. Fourth aisle and the fourth grade playground, or the fourth grade hallways and classrooms, and we hope to build that facility. Mainly my project, we want to keep clean, safe district, and we try to assist anybody that have problems in the district. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Valentine?
Thank you. Need a motion, vote to approve the facilities and ground program review as presented. Danny makes a motion, flies a second, send a discussion. All those in favor, Kerry is four of them. Next, early childhood program review.
Okay, so like Mr. Valentine mentioned, we made some changes to our early public program. Debbie Myers' preschool moved from next to central office to get in line of houses with our other preschools. So that allows all three preschools to share a common playground and have recess together. We think that's good for kids. That Miss Debbie Myers' preschool also utilizes a parking lot this year, and that's going well according to parents. Her preschool is also licensed this year, so all three of our preschools are licensed. We think that is a bragging point for us. If you look at that review, we have a hundred and nine non-duplicated kids served by our preschools, parents' and teachers' program, and our special services that we send to head start. That's our highest number ever. And we are already in talks for next year, looking to expand our services even further and covering more kids. Let's touch on some things that parents said as far as feedback. One of the things that I heard him talking to parents of our PAT program is that they love the activities Miss Karen breaks to them, allows them to learn with their child and be their child's teacher, which is the core value of that program. Another parent that I talked to said they had done, Parents as Teachers in a different district that I won't name, and they have two children under the age of three. And they said that district, their two children got served in the same session. So she felt like they got shortchanged, whereas with Miss Karen, she gives each child their own session, so they get their own amount of time to learn with Miss Karen and learn with mom, if that makes sense to you. Some other things we heard that were positive. One parent was bragging about one of our teachers using ClassDogo, which is a communication device, so they get to hear every day what's going on in the classroom. We heard a positivity about class sizes, and that was coming from the half-day preschool. Some ways that we can improve, heard one parent say they'd like for us to be able to serve more children, that is a goal for us. Let's see. We heard a couple times about wanting to be able to drop off earlier and stay later at the actual classroom rather than embarrassed in, and that would be a licensing issue we'd have to work through. Overall, probably the most common positive comment I heard though is that they love our staff at early childhood. We have some great teachers, we're very fortunate, have some experienced teachers. One of those ladies, this may be her last year, will definitely miss, kind of even if she ends up retiring this year. She's been a true blessing. I know my little girl is in Miss Byers' class, and I hear every day what they did, all night long. This week is fire safety week, and the fire trip comes tomorrow. Overall, we've got a great program, this is just three things.
So we currently, so in the past, we served fifteen at the big preschool...
Yep.
Then we served ten in Mrs. Dean's preschool, and we served ten half-day kids, so ten in the morning, ten in the afternoon, at Miss Byers' preschool. So we hired some help, Mrs. Dean's preschool, and we moved that, so they now serve twenty and twenty. So, so we have served forty full-day kids, and we still serve at Miss Byers, we still serve ten in the morning and ten in the afternoon. So our plan is to hire an additional personnel from Miss Byers and go to fifteen and fifteen. We still think there's a need for a half-day program, because that works for some parents. But we now serve almost only four-year-olds, I think.
Yeah, yeah, which is a first. This year was a first.
We prioritize, we serve four-year-olds first, kids that are gonna be school-ready next year. And we could serve this many three-year-olds too, if we had the space and had the staff.
Absolutely, absolutely. And one comment I heard from a parent was they wish we had another full-day classroom. I mean, it's, it's just a demand and a need.
It's, it's space where we can now draw attendance on those kids, so it's helping pay part of that bill. So we're gonna, we're gonna look to expand our preschool offerings in a sensible way as demand needs it. We have one more space we could expand to there, we'll take some renovations, some work, and we have one more space.
What was the, what is that?
So we use that throughout the elementary, but anyway, it's kind of like, it's online, and you can have just your class, so you know, when Thomas was in Miss Lofton's class, she could send out messages to the whole class, or she could contact a parent directly. They can also put pictures of what's going on in class there that just those parents can see, just a communication piece for them.
Yeah. Thank you. I have a motion and vote to approve early childhood program review, please. Randy makes a motion, has a second. I'll say it's like a second, send a discussion. All those in favor, Kerry is four of them.
Mr. Howe? So Mr. Sawyer and Mr. Howe approached me three weeks ago, probably?
Yeah.
About, they felt like there was a need to look at our vaping policy and our student handbooks, and they wondered if they needed to wait till next year to update that, or if we felt like it was something we could do this year. It felt like in the grand scheme of things, that if this was an issue, we need to address it. We will obviously have to be sending this out to parents and students, so they have a plan for that already, of how they're going to be sure that everybody knows what the new policy is. But Mr. Howe and Mr. Sawyer developed this policy. Mr. Trump, share it with us.
Coach Sawyer and I, Officer Reed, Billy, Principal Smith, we discussed it, and I contacted some neighboring schools and some other schools in the SCA. All of them are also in the process of revising their vaping policies as well, to make it more strict. They had kinda sent me what their ideas were, and then we met again and discussed it. Last year, from two thousand eighteen to nineteen, school year, we had fourteen incidents of vaping. This year, in first quarter, we've already had seventeen. So it's, it's increasing quite a bit, and, and so we're hoping that we make the consequences a little stricter, that will deter some kids from, you know, wanting to make that decision to bring the vape to school, or vape the school, or be in possession of it. We, the first offense, obviously, we confiscate the vape, refer it to the SRO officer, send that student home, parent has to come and get in when they return. They serve a day of recovery with the ISS teacher, and then that SRO officer and the ISS teacher, Mr. Thornt, will work on vaping education and trying to educate that student. And that'll happen each time as well. Second offense is OSS with vaping education in the recovery room when they return. Third offense is five days and vaping education in recovery room when they return.
So they are being disciplined, but we are educating. We are trying to remediate the issue as we go.
Yeah.
I think that's a key factor, isn't it?
Yes, yeah, yeah. The big difference is the consequences on the second and third offense, you know, the second and third offense and the old, old, or the current policy is two days and then four days of ISS, and you know, some kids, they, they may think it's worth it to try to bring one to school, or, or get one from a kid at school and try it, so hopefully we'll, we'll, that'll deter them, and we'll get those numbers to go down.
Questions for Mr. Howe?
Thank you. Need a motion and vote to consider the change to vaping discipline policy as presented by Mr. Howe. Michael makes some motion, has a second, Dan seconds, send a discussion. All that, all those in favor, Kerry is four of them.
All right, the last item on the agenda is consider resolution authorizing litigation. Really, it's, as the vaping epidemic is becoming more widespread around the country, school districts are beginning to partner together and with law firms in order to hold these companies responsible for targeting youth. In order to, to install vape detectors in just our middle school and high school bathrooms alone, we would, the district would have to spend approximately twenty thousand dollars. They're a little over nine hundred dollars apiece currently. We currently offer education classes in conjunction with our SRO and the Health Department and Missouri Ozark's Community Health, but the problem is still spreading due to the widespread access and detectability and the undetectability of the devices. I've met with the law firm of Wagstaff and Cartmel out of Kansas City, and they're really leading the charge in Midwest. I'm asking the Board of Education to consider a resolution authorizing Wagstaff and Cartmel to represent the district and joining other districts in this litigation. There's absolutely no cost to the district, as the attorney will receive twenty, twenty-five percent of the net proceeds of any settlement, and will front any monies needed for the litigation. We can withdraw at any point from the litigation. If we receive another law firm, you know, says they're doing it at twenty, twenty percent, we can choose to change. Wagstaff and Cartmel is a very prominent law firm in these type of cases. I've talked to, so the superintendent of the Lathus School Districts and I are pretty good friends, they have, they have passed this resolution. Their Wentzville has done it as well. If you saw on the news the other day, the governor has come out, I mean, he has passed an executive order with vaping. Just feel like we have to send a message, specifically to Jewel, who... Specifically, to Jule, who is the company that really started this trend. They are targeting youth. I think you will see thousands of school districts join in this. I don't, I don't know what will come of it, but at least we will change, I believe, we will change the practice, their advertising practice. If you look at their advertising, it looks very much like Marlboro and the Marlboro brand in the seventies and eighties. They actually, Jule studied the Marlboro advertising scheme. And they have, that's how they have attacked it. It's, you, obviously, I gave you lots of documentation to look at. And I gave you the resolution as well, which I can read, or you can just pass the resolution as presented to you, or you can choose to do nothing at this time. So any questions, documents, or further?
I think something to be done with, with Mr. Howe.
I mean, we, so let's say in five years, this thing was settled and we received some dollars. Really, we're going to have to add vape detectors. We're gonna be fronting some money. What that's going to do at some point is, you know, we spent money with Officer Reed getting education. Obviously, we spend man-hours with Mr. Sawyer and Mr. Howe. We're gonna be spending money on, on these vape detectors. It's going to only reimburse the district. It's not, will never be a windfall. That's not, I mean, I think we're fooling ourselves if we think we'll ever recoup all of our dollars. But at least we may be able to recoup some at some point.
Michael makes a motion to accept the resolution authorizing litigation as Dr. Miller presented. Have a second? Dan seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Carries four of them.
And I will keep you up today with this meeting's score.
That concludes our agenda items for tonight. Thank you everyone for attending. Our next, uh, board meeting will be November twenty-first at six thirty in the sports room. A motion, a second? Randy makes a motion, have a second? Dan seconds, all in favor? Carries four of them.
Thank you.